I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for June 12th, 2018 at 6:29 PM. Hello and happy Peanut Butter Cookie Day. If I had time, I was gonna make a whole bunch for you guys, but it's gonna have to wait for the 4th of July picnic. Tonight, we have a lot on our list, so start with the consent agenda. Approval of the April 25th work session, the May 8th regular meeting, and the May 22nd, 2018 work session minutes. Approval of the April bank balances. Budget report for the period ending April 30th, 2018. Approval of the April check register. Legal project costs. Department head's monthly report for May of 2018. Grant summary for the state marine board. The items on our Urban Renewal Agency agenda are approval of the May 27th, 2018 Urban Renewal Agency Minutes. Resolution UR 65 authorizing indebtedness. I'm not gonna go into all the details on that one, we will in a bit. And Resolution UR 66, which is Resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency authorizing indebtedness. Our regular agenda is Resolution 1137 authorizing full faith and credit financing for the Civic Center project. Resolution 1138 referring a ballot measure to renew the fire services operating levy. Resolution 1139 referring a ballot measure to renew the police services operating levy and business license fees. Tammy, could you please call the roll? Counselor Milch?
Here.
Counselor Neese?
Here.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Reisner?
Counselor McMahon?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stempel?
Here.
Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We are going to start with the presentation. Yes, and Madam Mayor, before you hand that over to Chief Jolly, he would also like to add one more presentation to the agenda tonight to give recognition to a reserve police officer.
Thank you. Chief Jolly?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tyler Hale is one of our reserve officers. If you're not aware, reserve officers serve the police department in a volunteer capacity without pay. I came here almost six years ago and got to know Tyler really well, and when I get the chance, which isn't often enough, recently we went out and got to ride on him Friday night. Tyler selflessly gives his service to this community in a volunteer capacity. He has not just a reserve, but he's a reserve who has the status of being able to operate and function alone in the city, so it's like an additional officer to us. He comes out generally twice a week and gives his time and service and serves our community on this volunteer basis. He's been doing this for over 10 years, and that service is what we want to recognize tonight, that he has done as a small token of our appreciation and all, if you'll bear with me, all of this.
No, absolutely.
It's the volunteer service medal from the Gladstone Police Department. Here by awards the volunteer service medal to Officer Tyler Hale for his 10 years of service to the citizens of Gladstone as a reserve police officer. Officer Hale has selflessly given over 6,000 hours of volunteer time to controlling the city of Gladstone in his capacity as a reserve officer, resulting in an estimated $120,000 in savings to the citizens of Gladstone. In addition to serving as a solo police officer, Officer Hale has consistently participated annually in community events including Bike Radio, Shop with a Cop, Gladstone Community Festival, as well as providing police presence at high school football games. Officer Hale has also been a fixture representing GPD at events such as the balloon festival in Tiger, airshow in Hillsborough, instructing at the Clackamas Reserve Academy, and the annual Clackamas County Domestic Violence Week. His dedication and service to the community exemplifies the core values of GPD. We look forward to his continued service.
Oh, I think you should.
All right. I'll keep it short. Well, half-life, you're having fun. Just about a couple months ago, I actually found this old picture, and I found my old square again picture from 14 years ago in this very room. A little younger and had some more hair and whatever, but there I was, my right hand raised, taking a note, and wouldn't happen any other way. It's been my pleasure and my honor, and you know, there's 10 more.
Awesome. Thank you. Wow. All right, Chief Jolly, are you up again?
Jamil.
Jamil.
Don't forget that.
I just wanted to acknowledge, last month, myself and City Administrator Betts from Tennesse Island had the honor of going down to the DUII conference for the state of Oregon, where Jamil Kassaw was recognized as the Community City DUI Officer of the Year for the entire state of Oregon.
Wow.
And I'll let him talk a little bit about it, but I can say that Jamil's been here just about a couple of years now and has really taken hard work and safeguarding the citizens of heart and is a true professional who we value very, very much in his efforts. We couldn't be prouder of him. For an agency our size to have that kind of recognition on a statewide basis, we're proud of Jamil, and I just wanted to let you and the council and the citizens know of his accomplishment. Jamil?
Yeah, I'm very honored. It wasn't an award that I expected at all. 2017 was my first full patrol year on staff as an officer, and so to get that, be nominated, but then also selected for that award was extremely humbling and honoring. So, last year, I just have a huge heart to taking care of drivers off the road and making street paper and driver stuff, and so I'm honored to be selected for that and not only just to light the fire and keep going and do the best I can, and I'm glad. So, thank you.
Well, I have a quick question. So DUII Officer of the Year, is that based on the number of DUII tickets? Because I hope not, that Gladstone has, you know, outpaced the rest of the state.
No, no. It's a number, they've not heard of this. So, there's three categories. There's county, municipality, and state. And so, for the Officer of the Year, I got that. It's not all based on numbers, it has to do with the impact on the department.
Good.
So, yeah, our city's not a drunky city. But it has to do with the amount of productivity in the past compared to the numbers. I arrested 74 DUIs last year, and it just, it had a big impact on the department's numbers, but also just the productivity out there.
Great.
Not all members.
Good. Thank you. Fair. Keep doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Awesome. All right, are there any agenda additions or corrections? No, Mayor and Council. All right, so here's my speech. I usually hold my comments for the regular agenda, but I'm gonna go ahead and do it now. I'd like to say a few words regarding the City Council. This is nothing new, I say it at every meeting, but I still, every time I'm here, feel it's important that you guys understand our limitations. And I think first, the most important one is that we're sitting here representing you, not our own personal agendas and not our own personal beliefs. It's so important that everybody understands that. There have been so many times when decisions being made don't align with our personal feelings, but after hearing what our citizens desire, we've gone a different direction. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, it just means that we listened and acted accordingly. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decision. These start at the federal and state level, and then they filter down to our city's comprehensive plans, city charter, codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions. We have to be consistent, and the decisions we make have to be defensible. And I want you all to know that we greatly appreciate all of your time spent here with us, participating in this process. The council is going to hold their comments until the end of the meeting in regards to business from the audience. My goal is to keep the meeting respectful and engaging, and I hope that you guys can all do that with us, so thank you. So first is business from the audience. Tammy?
Bob Everett?
Good evening, everyone. Gladstone, I have an office down here, and also my house is here, and I love living in Gladstone. It's been a few months since I have spoken concerning the festival, and that's what I'm here for. It's only a month and a half away, I should've been here about every month to bug everybody, but you know, we've got, it's gonna be August the 3rd, 4th, and 5th. We're excited by the activities, the same, we've got a number of the same activities. We do have one addition, which I'll mention in just a second, that we're excited about. I'm sorry, this year, Jackie, the Gladiator race seems to have gone the way of the dodo bird. We are hoping that it can be revived, you know, it depends on if Jeremy ever gets back in town, so you know, we heard about that and we're disappointed, and Jeremy did assure us that it would go on, but you know, he's too busy having fun somewhere else, so it seems like that's going to at least disappear for this year. One of the things that I, and as usual, I always like to thank everyone. I like to thank the volunteers, I like to thank the city. The city does so much for us, I just can't, I can't say how much they do for us and how much they've helped us out and how cooperative they are in every single way. Also, the sponsors have been great this year, as usual. I've been a little bit back of the eight ball this year because of some personal issues, so, but still, everyone else on the committee has worked so hard, and I really appreciate that, and I want to thank everybody on the committee that we have. And if you should take a time, make sure you visit the website. We are excited this year because there is somebody in the back row, a young lady, who has organized and will, looks like it's a go all the way. We're excited about that, starting up the beer garden again. It will be something different. We're planning on having, you know, some entertainment. We're also planning on making it family-friendly through most of the day, so that kids will be welcome in there. It will be closed off, but at the same time, they are welcome during the day, and there'll be food, other activities, so you know, we're excited about this. A lot of people had asked about it, and it took, took a lot of effort by the individual I'm talking about, right Candy? And so, and we're having some others. We're actually gonna have, it looks like we may have a little fishing sort of exhibition there, it sounds like it's rather interesting. Doug Luce is talking about that, we'll see if, see how that works out. So anyway, if anybody has any questions, anything else, be sure to let me know, and any suggestions, we're always open to suggestions and volunteers. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
All right. Super.
Next.
Bill Osborne?
Bill Osborne, I live here in Gladstone. Don't worry, I don't have anything written down today, just a few dates for cleanups for SOLV down at High Rocks. We have one coming up on June 23rd. We also have one scheduled for July 21st, August 18th, and September 29th. Generally don't do them in October, although if the weather's good, we'll do another one. But yeah, the next one here coming up on the 23rd, we're looking for volunteers, so again, you're all invited down to grab a bag and a pickup stick and a pair of gloves and clean up some of the garbage. The last cleanup was surprisingly hard to find garbage. We had people out there, but we didn't get more than eight to 10 bags of garbage. Public Works provided us a big dump box, and we didn't do it much justice with eight to 10 bags of garbage in it, looked pretty empty, so. Not that I'm hoping we'll find a lot of garbage, but if it's there, I hope we do and get it pulled out of there, as well as shopping carts and other odd, odd things. SOLV usually has a contest to see who can find the weirdest garbage and such, so.
So is that at 10, 10 to noon?
10 to noon, yes, on those Saturdays. Again, June 23rd, July 21st, August 18th, and September 29th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we put that kind of thing on our calendar? We do, okay. Next.
All right.
Okay, so the first item is the consent agenda. Any discussion? Would someone like to make a motion then?
Yep, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items 1 through 7.
I'll second it. Motion was made by Counselor McMahon, seconded by Counselor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passed. Next is correspondence, and it looks like we did receive a couple. What's on your dais is comments and remarks regarding to the business license discussion. Okay, but that's it? That's it. Okay, we need to adjourn to the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn to the Renewal Agency meeting.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Neese, seconded by Counselor McMahon. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned to the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. First item is approval of the March 27th, 2018 Urban Renewal Agency Minutes. Do we have any questions, concerns, discussion? Would someone make a motion to approve?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency meeting minutes of March 27th, 2018.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Counselor McMahon, seconded by Counselor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passed. Next is correspondence, and it looks like we did receive a couple. What's on your dais is comments and remarks regarding to the business license discussion? Okay, but that's it? That's it. Okay, we need to adjourn to the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn to the Renewal Agency meeting.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Neese, seconded by Counselor McMahon. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned to the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. First item is approval of the March 27th, 2018 Urban Renewal Agency Minutes. Do we have any questions, concerns, discussion? Would someone make a motion to approve?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency meeting minutes of March 27th, 2018.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Counselor McMahon, seconded by Counselor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Urban Renewal Agency Minutes approved. Item number nine is Resolution UR 65 authorizing indebtedness for capital projects described in the Urban Renewal Plan for the Gladstone Urban Renewal Area and approving the 23rd Amendment to the Gladstone Urban Renewal Plan, updating project descriptions. Phew, staff, are you guys ready? This is the night that we have been waiting for, and just to prelude what you're gonna be approving tonight for the audience, is that since March, we've been having conversations with the City Council and our legal bond council, our city legal council, our finance manager, and our interim finance director in regards to borrowing funds for the new police department and city hall. And so what you're gonna be asked to do is two items in urban renewal and then one item in the city, and what we're doing first here is we have to do an amendment to our urban renewal plan that makes sure it has a succinct description of the new city hall municipal court facilities and the new police department. And so what you're doing now is approving that 23rd amendment, but you're also approving the master borrowing declaration that will provide the authority for the agency to establish terms to issue the debt. And the debt is $3.8 million for the Urban Renewal Agency, and it will be $3 million for full faith and credit, which we'll do in a different item. And so just very briefly, I'll have Kathy walk you through each item that you're gonna be approving, the two in urban renewal.
Good evening. We staged this so that basically it would try to flow as far as the first one being the Urban Renewal Agency, as Jackie was saying, that's gonna authorize the agency to enter into the financing agreement for $3.8 million. It's setting your parameters for the integration of the city IGA with the repayment on the full faith and credit borrowing that we'll be doing with the city, or by the city, and then amending the plan, as she was saying, to revise the project description to basically state, city hall, municipal court, and the police department, pulling the library reference out of there, seeing as how funds will not be used for that. And Exhibit A that's attached to it, this master borrowing declaration, which is 33 pages long, and I challenge anybody to understand much of what it says in there, but it is something necessary for the Urban Renewal Agency only. And spells out all the legal requirements to the agency and ensures that the city's payments will be forthcoming through the full faith and credit portion. So it goes into the subrecipient, or excuse me, not subrecipient, the thank you, the subordinate clause on there, and the city stays fully protected. So are there any questions about the UR 65 resolution?
No questions? Tammy, do we have anyone that wanted to speak on this item?
No.
All right, so you're looking for a motion to accept the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number UR 65 authorizing indebtedness for capital projects described in the Urban Renewal Plan for the Gladstone Urban Renewal Area and approving the 23rd Amendment to the Gladstone Urban Renewal Plan, updating project descriptions.
Everybody got that?
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Counselor Mercero, seconded by Counselor McMahon. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution UR 65 passes. Now we're on to number 10, Resolution UR 66, a resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Gladstone, Oregon, authorizing indebtedness for capital projects described in the Urban Renewal Plan for the Gladstone Urban Renewal Area. Staff?
So with UR 66, this resolution then completes the agreement between the agency and the city for the second borrowing of the $3 million full faith and credit issue. The Exhibit A attachment on this one is the intergovernmental agreement between the two agencies, and clearly spells out all the terms regarding the borrowing, the transferring, and then the repayment of funds back to the city. Are there any questions about it?
I just have one comment. My freshman English teacher, Mrs. Wong, is probably rolling over in her grave with a stopple, because that is a 100, well, I counted 130 words without a sentence, or without a period in that whole section. So she would be either very proud, or probably would want more periods, but I was, that was my only comment, sorry.
An award for that one. Tammy, do we have anyone that wants to comment on this one? All right, would someone like to make a motion then?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, that we approve Resolution Number UR 66 authorizing indebtedness for capital projects described in the Urban Renewal Plan for the Gladstone Urban Renewal Area.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor McMahon, seconded by Counselor Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? UR 66 has passed. So we need a motion to adjourn from the Urban Renewal Agency and reconvene to the regular agenda.
I'd like to make that motion, Mayor.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Counselor McMahon, seconded by Counselor Neese. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed, we're going to reconvene into the regular agenda. First item, number 11, is Resolution 1137 authorizing full faith and credit financing. Staff?
So this resolution completes the financing then from the city perspective and provides authorization to secure the full faith and financing, the full faith and credit financing backed by the city of Gladstone, and then entering into the IGA with the agency. The Exhibit A attached here is the exact same document that was on the last resolution for the UR, the URA, and if approved, the term sheets for each borrowing will be circulated tomorrow to the banks. They're all set to go, all final information, and numbers have been added, so we're ready to proceed with those if approved. We also have the ability to issue bonds if the bank placement rates are not desirable, so it's set up to be quite flexible in that regard. From a budgetary perspective, once we get all the numbers finalized, we'll bring two budget adjustment resolutions back to the City Council and the Urban Renewal Agency to finalize all the numbers between the capital project fund for the Civic Center and then the Urban Renewal District. It'll be structured to reflect the activity that, you know, ends up being finalized, and we hope to be able to portray it then in a very clear and transparent presentation for you to be able to follow the projects.
Any questions?
So are there any questions there?
Nope. All right, would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1137 of the City of Gladstone, Oregon, authorizing full faith and credit financing.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Counselor McMahon, seconded by Counselor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 1137's passed. Thank you. Next item, number 12, is Resolution 1138 referring a ballot measure to renew the fire services operating levy. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will hand this over to Chief O'Connor. If anybody can't see it back there, you guys can come over here and watch.
Okay. Thank you, Jackie. Mayor Stempel, council, and city staff, and of course, the citizens sitting behind me, thank you for allowing us a couple minutes to present in regards to the fire medical services levy. I'm joined by Assistant Chief Mike Funk. We're gonna kind of tag-team this presentation for you, and we feel this because of the gravity of renewing a levy, and every five years that we should just go over this for a couple of minutes and then take any questions at the end. Yeah? No, that's not the right one, okay. Give me a right arrow up there, wait. There you go, thank you. So just really more for the folks behind me, just a reminder, a five-year operating levy, what it is, is every five years, this has to go out again, levies max out at five years. Some agencies use them just for personnel, we use it for personnel and for things, for apparatus, for programs, but it's important that that is the cap, this is not like a bond for bricks and mortar, like building a school or things, things like that. So more for those in the audience, that's why this levy comes out every, every five years, and you're always tying it to a general election cycle. Because I'm sitting next to my Assistant Chief, I'm sitting next to Living History for Gladstone Fire Department, Mike just hit his 40-year mark, I'm gonna ask him to talk about why the, the genesis of the levy in 1998 and some of the renewal process. So Mike, please.
Thank you, Chief. I do have some of the history, all the people that I'm sitting for in front of the council, some of them understand and know some of the history, some of them do not. For those who do not, let me just throw out, I became a full-time employee here in 1996, and I think important to discuss is I was the only, only full-time employee in the fire department at that time in 1996. I replaced the existing fire marshal. At that time, we were operated or administered by a part-time fire chief. We had about 40 members at that time, and I can tell you firsthand, the department was struggling during that time. We had a lot of different things going on, we're doing the best we can, and we were a good fire department. We were a good fire department, but we recognized, you know, coming into the 2000s, we just weren't where we needed to be. We were struggling in the areas of training, not that we didn't have training, but we needed so much more. There are standards and rules and regulations that were coming faster than any one person in the department can keep up with. Trying to take care of 40 members, and that was our job as administrator, to take care of the 40 members of our department. They're the guys that put the water on the fire, but we have to support them in a certain way, and we just did not have the ability in a one-person system and a part-time chief to do that. We had also problems with recruitment during that time. Our recruitment had always been the people that live in the city limits of Gladstone, and you know, even as far back as 20 years ago, we were starting to find less and less people willing to put the dedication in to be that, that fire service that the city of Gladstone needed. Both the police and fire recognized that we didn't have unlimited funds in the city general fund, and at that time, it was decided that both police and fire, I'm gonna speak, of course, to fire, but both police and fire had a legitimate Both the police and fire recognized that we didn't have unlimited funds in the City General Fund, and at that time, it was decided that both police and fire, I'm going to speak, of course, to fire, but both police and fire had a legitimate need to go out to our citizens and ask for the approval of a levy. We went to our citizens in nineteen ninety-eight after we'd put together a levy package. We asked our voters to support the levy, we explained why we needed it, and for us, it was putting together that person that the City of Gladstone needed. We've asked for it, this will be our fourth time that we're at, we got our original levy, this will be the fourth time that we've asked for a renewal. And so, in two thousand twelve, we, our levy was renewed by the citizens of Gladstone. We think that the message that we put out there really resonated with the citizens of Gladstone. It was a consistent message that we had pretty much said each time, but at thirty-one cents a thousand, it really resonated with our citizens. I don't know how often it is, but, but I'm told that it's not very often that you have an eighty-two percent, almost eighty-three percent approval of something you put forth. We had a need, we explained our need well, and, and that's what we're here before you again today trying to speak to that need.
Okay, Chief. Thank you. So what are the levy funds used for? Well, one, full-time position to coordinate firefighter training, and there is a picture of Battalion Chief Jeff Smith, and we also have the live version sitting here behind me. And Jeff's waving because he's about to go on a call, and Jeff's waving because he just turned in his retirement paperwork for August thirty-one. So Jeff is the unusual category of being a person who was hired and retired off a levy, actually the only person I know that that's true in the fire service. So it's an incredibly important position, and Jeff's position provides leadership, certainly the increased training standards is amazing. We've done a really good job of that, certainly the last couple of years, really raising our game for training, making sure people are competent to do what they're doing. And then ancillary benefit, I'm not sure it's an expectation of the next person who's in the training officer job, but Jeff has written, and we received over two million dollars in grants during Jeff's career that he has written and administered. So a hundred thousand dollar year average, that's pretty good over twenty-year career. The other thing that it does, and this goes back to the standard of cover that the City Council adopted in January of two thousand eighteen. If you remember, we have the fastest response times adopted in a standard of cover by any fire department in Clackamas County. That's why you have Gladstone Fire Department, so we can cover our small city and, you know, go outside if other departments call for help. But we have a five-and-a-half-minute response time for EMS and a six-minute response time for fire truck calls, so fires or motor vehicle crashes, things like that. So though, we don't have, about half of the levy is for personnel. It's Jeff's position, it's some seasonal stuff, some part-time stuff. What it does allow us to do is programs and capital reserve that Mike's going to speak to in a second, and we use the levy money. If we didn't have the levy money, which is twenty-two percent of our tax revenue every year, if we didn't have that, we'd have to spend money out of the general fund, and that would impact personnel. We did add some captain positions out of the general fund, we got a grant, we did all this stuff, but if we didn't have twenty-two percent of our tax revenue, no matter how you slash it, that's going to impact us, and personnel's going to get impacted as well. So it allows us to maintain the staff that we need to meet that standard of cover.
So our capital reserves, we have kind of a two-pronged approach to our capital reserves. We do have some capital reserves in the general fund, but that just can't put enough money aside for some of the purchase that we need to make of the capital expenditures. We also have a capital reserve line in our levy, and it, that is absolutely important to the success of the fire department. We need things like big red fire trucks, we need things like end-of-life right now, the self-contained breathing apparatus, the air packs that we wear on their back. We have a bill coming up for about two hundred and fifty thousand. They're reaching the end of their life, and they need to be replaced by standards and rules and regulations that I already discussed. We have been able to set money aside in our general reserve funds, both, excuse me, the general fund and the levy in order to pay for these should we have to. Now, again, we mentioned grant writer Jeff Smith back there, has got a grant out there that we have not been denied yet, and Jeff reminds me that no news is good news. So it hasn't been denied yet, we're still hoping that the government will help us pay for that big fund, but we think that we're being responsible by setting aside these reserve funds. But we have to set it aside in both the levy as well as the general fund. We have a need that's coming up in the not-too-far future. We have a twenty-two-year-old fire engine out there. Average life of a fire engine can be ten to fifteen years, depending on where you're at. We are twenty-two years old on, on one of our fire engines, so we are in need of replacement in the not-too-far-out future. That's going to be about six hundred thousand dollars. It's pretty expensive, and that's why we have the importance of needing to put this money aside for our, for our engines and, and rescue-type vehicles. Another service that we need is our additional equipment. Our additional equipments are those things like we use for extrication, our jaws of life. It was about nineteen ninety-nine that we first purchased our jaws of life. That was a direct result of a purchase that we were able to make through capital reserve funds, set aside specifically in our levy. We've also bought things like our life pack machines, that basically the heart machines for emergency medical services. We've bought things like hoses and nozzles. Those are all things that if we don't have the levy funding, it's going to fall back solely on the, the city's general fund, or we're going to have to cut services.
So the existing rate, as it's been since two thousand two, ninety-eight, it was a fixed amount, and then it went to a per thousand rate in the two thousand two renewals, thirty-one cents per thousand, and if it's renewed, it's estimated it'll generate over three hundred thousand dollars per year, a little bit escalating based on the tax base, and that was in the staff report with Kathy's projections for the five years. So based on everything that we've told you, sprinkled with a little bit of history, we, working with the city administrator, we recommend placing the renewal of the fire and medical services levy on the November two thousand eighteen ballot for renewal with no increase. And we, Mike and I would be happy to take any questions.
Questions?
I have one. What does one do with a twenty-year-old fire engine once it's retired?
Do you want to buy it?
Well, yeah, actually, you might be looking for another one.
Found one.
Okay, all right. Generally, you can sell them to small agencies in rural areas. You know, twenty years old is not super old, it's getting long in the tooth for us here in the metro area, but there's a market for that.
Okay.
They don't retain their value well at that age, though, it's true.
Okay, thank you.
What every boy needs.
And is there not an option also of using it as a reserve rig for another five years or something, or is that not?
We could do that, but obviously, our intent would be that we don't want to maintain three, three fire engines anymore. We just went down to two a few years ago, that we would move our first out into reserve status and purchase a new one to be frontline.
Okay.
How many calls do you guys go on a year?
We did sixteen hundred last year.
And what's the average for a, a station in this area? That seems, that's pretty high.
That's a pretty good number for a station. I mean, we're not, we're not the busiest station in Clackamas County, but we're, I'd say we're top ten for sure out of one station, yeah.
Let me stop and look at our two-and-a-half square miles, which is primarily where we respond to. That's a lot for a two-and-a-half square mile area, but that's also part of our success. When we adopt a standard of cover, we can make that fastest times in Clackamas County because of the distance that we have to travel.
Mutual aid, do you guys, have you, out of the sixteen hundred calls, Chief, how do you guys, you break it down, obviously, you have the stats, do you do a lot of mutual aid with the other agencies around?
Yeah, we do a fair amount because we're so small. You know, we, it's easy to get pulled out of Gladstone, we don't cover a huge area. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's a fair amount, and it's pretty equitable, mostly with Clackamas Fire. Sometimes we'll cross the river into Westland and work with TVFNR, and every now and then there's something big, we'll go on the mountain or go to Canby.
I think it's just good for the citizens to understand that we have this relationship and that we continue to promote that relationship, and they know that this is us, but it's also our surrounding neighbors, too, that we're helping and who assist us if we need it, correct?
Absolutely. If there's a fire in Gladstone, if we had a fire right now, we would have units from Clackamas Fire for sure, maybe some TVFNR units coming in if we had an actual working structure fire.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
You talked about forty members, you said at one time, in nineteen ninety-eight, and you said there was starting to be a decline. So how many members do you have today?
Thirty-two members today.
So, and you're saying that because of doing the switching that, are you going to go back up to the forty members, or are you going to stay where you are?
Well, we're proud to, is I write it fine, Chief? We're really proud to boast that we just brought on four new members. You'll see their pictures in the city newsletter. We are aggressively starting our next academy with Captain Veroman in charge of our next academy. We had over twenty applications that were returned to us from people that wanted to join. We have had a recent influx, and I'll give credit to our training chief, who started reaching out to colleges and other places around, hey, if you move to Gladstone, we can give you some excellent training and experience. Right now, we're projecting to have as high as twelve and really expect about eight. Those are our expectations, that's nothing for sure, but we're expecting about eight in our next academy. It'll start bringing those numbers back up. And then our cap, I think, is, was at least, in the past, has been at fifty.
Well, we do, we do have a bit of a space cap as far as how many people we can have, but forty total is a pretty good number for the department.
Okay. You talked about half of the, of the money on the levy goes to personnel. Is that correct? Did I misunderstand that?
You did not misunderstand that. Let's see, actually, it's a bit, it's a bit more than that. We've got the, I'm looking at my biennial budget with new contact lenses, I apologize. Yeah, it's less than that, it's actually maybe forty percent. I don't have the percentages in front of me, but we've got the training and safety officer position, we have some money budgeted for part-time, which we're actually not using as much because we have the full-time captains on board. We've got seasonal help that Chief Funk actually administers, we always have folks working with Public Works on the, on the water system and the hydrants, and then these associated payroll costs on top of that for, mostly for the full-time position. Yeah, and then below that, we have contracted services, equipment testing, and then the big cap, the major item, the more than fifty percent, is the capital outlays, which is reserve funds that we generally carry forward from year to year. So building up money to buy that new engine, building up money in case we're able to shake a training facility out of all, all the stuff that's going on here in the city, and then for the big purchases like the heart monitors and those types of things.
So you've got Jeff on as your grant writer?
We do.
Going after money? Jeff Smith, correct?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
All right. And so is that his sole position? Is that what he is supposed to be doing, or is he supposed to be also in, working as an employee within the fire department? I mean, it looks like it's two different positions.
Oh, yeah, well, I would say that Jeff happens to be a talented grant writer, who's a battalion chief with the fire department. I mean, that's kind of a salad plate that he took on for his core responsibilities. So we'll need to, to replace that somehow with either external expertise or internal expertise, or I know where he lives, and he still knows how to write grants, and he still has a computer, so.
We'll be living close by, my understanding.
No, they have computers in Gladeen Beach, I'm pretty sure. So it is certainly, sometimes when you lose people of his tenure, you lose some expertise, and we'll have to replace that somehow.
But it sounds like you are, the levy kind of helps you, and that's what you rely on to support the fire department, is that correct?
It's twenty-two percent of our, of our operating budget, absolutely. So we would, it would be a significant blow if the levy was not on the ballot or the levy did not get renewed.
So, and this comes up every five years, correct?
The levy's a five-year levy, now, because of the cycle of general elections, there's times that we renew it early, renew it a year and a half early instead of half a year early, because you're always trying to hit that, that even-year November election. That's why it looks kind of funny with the two thousand two, two thousand eight, you know, renewals, even though it's a five-year levy, but that is correct.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
And before you decide on policy decision, just a reminder that November sounds like a long ways away, but we have done our time outs when we have to have a challenge period for the ballot title and allow for that proper noticing. And also, once a decision's made this evening, staff will not be able to advocate for or against this, it would be up to the community, a pact, or the elected officials.
Do we have someone that wants to speak on this one?
Yes, we do, Bill Osborne.
Bill, do you want to do right now, or do you want to wait and follow up the police?
Either or.
Okay, it's your choice. Okay. Stay close in case there's any more questions or comments.
Phil Osborne, first, I'm not speaking out against the levies or anything, I have nothing to praise for the fire department and the police station. People decide one way or the other on it, and so that's how I think things should be. Sounds like it goes for some good things, and like I said, I have nothing negative to say about either of them or the levy. I was just wanting to point out on the figures. I was looking at that, and I dropped this by today, and actually, the budget lady, Catherine, Kathy?
Kathy Bunker.
Right, she called me back. We had a brief conversation, and we approached the numbers, I guess, from a different perspective. Right now, the way it's worded, it says the average, essentially, the average household would pay a hundred and thirty-six dollars a year on the police levy and sixty-two on the fire. I took the average tax-assessed value, ran that forward three percentage here for the six years that the levy will be, and then multiplied that by the thirty-one cents or the sixty-eight cents. And I come up with a hundred and fifty-seven eighty on the, for the police levy and seventy-one ninety-four for the fire on an average. It's not a big difference, it's just one of those things that I think most of us will probably pan a little bit more than, than what's on here, so I'd just like to see the numbers, maybe double-checked on all that, and get the right numbers on there, because property taxes are, are one of the big things that everybody tends to be upset about here. We've got a nice community, we also have some of the highest property taxes in the state, so while I'm sure both these levies will pass, just pretty nice to make sure we got the right numbers there. Maybe I'm wrong on it, I'm not the best at numbers, but I've just seen that, it seemed a little bit off, so I figured I would at least mention that so you guys could take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
We'll make sure the numbers are right.
We checked the numbers that he provided us, and they are correct with you have in your packet this evening.
Okay. All right, any more questions? So what you want from us tonight is approval or not of the resolution?
That is correct. If you approve the resolution, then you're referring this to a vote of the citizens to decide if they want to renew the fire levy. So yes, a motion and a second and an approval.
So Mayor, I'd like to recommend that we place the fire and medical services levy renewal on the November two thousand eighteen ballot.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Councilor McMahon and seconded by Councilor Mercerow. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed, thank you.
Thank you, and before I give way to Chief Jolly, I did want to let the council know that we've completed the fire department's strategic plan. I've actually had it for a little bit, but thought maybe you already had enough light reading for this evening. So I'll be forwarding the electronic version to the city administrator with a bit of a cover email, and I'll do that tomorrow. And I've actually already got hard copies for you, so when she gives me the okay, I'll place those in your boxes. It's forty-seven pages, it's a much lighter read than the standard of cover, you'll really enjoy it.
Thank you.
Do you have any stopple?
punctuation is well done, you'll be pleased.
And just for the record, Mayor and Council, that, that last motion was to approve Resolution Number Eleven Thirty-eight. It wasn't framed that way, I just wanted it to be clear for the record.
Next item is Number Thirteen, let me put my glasses on so I can see it, sorry. Okay, Item Number Thirteen, Resolution One One Three Nine, referring a ballot measure to renewal, to renew the police services operating levy.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff, I appreciate your time. What you have before you is the Gladstone Police Department mission statement, and I'm here before you tonight. The first line basically sums it up in partnership with the community. And we can't provide services or function without the support of the council and the support of the great citizens that we have here in Gladstone. And as I get into this, I think you'll understand some of my thinking on this. But we're dedicated to providing the best services and response that we possibly can. I, the next line down, you'll see in two thousand sixteen, a snapshot showed that we had a twenty percent increase in calls for service. So we're getting busier, there's more things that are demanding our attention in the community and the outside pressures from outside the community that we have to deal with to ensure that we have a safe community. There we go. It's hard to follow the fire department, and certainly, I'm not going to take as much time, but I appreciate their efforts. The historical context is very similar. We started this in nineteen ninety-eight, and going back to two thousand three, two thousand eight and subsequent. We started this in 1998, and going back to 2003, 2008, and subsequently 2012, I believe, we've had the five-year police services and communication needs levy approved. And why this is critical to us is that it generates nearly six hundred thousand dollars per year, and that money is used to fund five positions within our police department. That's nearly a quarter of our police department. I think on the ballot, it says twenty percent, but it's just almost, just under twenty-five percent of our personnel are funded through the police levy. And they're critical positions. They include two police officers, one of which is our K-9 officer. As you're aware, we recently restarted that program with your approval and support and the generous donation of a citizen who gave us ten thousand dollars towards the purchase of a new dog. And that program, I'm happy to say, is now up and running, and we have that dog back and serving the citizens. Besides those two officers, the levy also funds the school resource officer program. For those of you not aware, we have four schools, including the kindergarten here in Gladstone, and that officer spends all of his time working in those schools and dealing with issues. This does a number of things. It provides a positive mentor for students, a sense of calm, safety, and security, and it keeps other officers from having to answer calls or be tied up at the school. It's invaluable to us and the school district to have that connection with the school community, serving more than a couple thousand students in a direct fashion. It also takes care of our municipal ordinance specialist who does code enforcement and pays entirely for his salary, as well as an executive assistant. And I believe that was added in the area of 2012 by the former chief. And what I've done with that position is to enable that person to take on administrative duties to the extent that sergeants aren't tied up in the station, working on those type of paperwork things, training requests, budgets, check issuance, answering phones, and that allows me to get three sergeants out on the road, much, much more. It's a model that has taken some time to get going and transform in the department, but it's been very successful. Also, the levy program funds our share, our annual cost, to the tune of approximately a hundred and thirty to a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for dispatch services. So, when citizens call 911 and need a police officer, it goes to a central location up in Oregon City, and they're able to take your 911 call and dispatch an officer immediately. So, this levy allows us to pay that bill that we have. We don't have our own dispatch center, which saves us hundreds of thousands of dollars not having additional personnel and provides us a better service. So, that takes care of our dispatching and 911 service. And our K-9 program and our SRO program expenses, anything from doing promotional items or training or teaching in the school, you see a picture of the former SRO, Eric Graves, reading green eggs and ham up there, and they actually served green eggs with, I don't know, some kind of poisoned food coloring, but the kids ate them. And so, we're having those direct contacts with people and to buy things such as green eggs and ham and have the impact that we have with the students and dog food for the dog. Those are some of those miscellaneous expenses. This program, from the research that I've been able to do, I pulled up an article from the Clackamas Review, which is always right, from October 28, 2008, and it was talking about referendum, this very ballot measure in 2008, and they were asking, here's the question, "Shall Gladstone continue to impose a tax of sixty-eight per thousand for five years beginning in 2009 to 2010 for police services? This measure may cause property taxes to increase more than three percent." The point is, the sixty-eight per thousand, I've been able to trace that back until this originated. We have not asked for an increase or additional funds. This levy does not increase in any way, shape, or form what people are paying. This has been in effect since 2002, as far as I can tell, at least in this form, and has been approved repeatedly over. I think Fire Chief O'Connor and I talked specifically about this and with Ms. Betts about making sure that we could operate and function with the existing levies and still not have to worry about tax increases or creating more debt. I think somebody, it might have been Bill, mentioned something about property taxes being a concern, and that's a concern for us, too. So, we were very conscious not to ask for any additional monies in regards to this and continue to operate with the same levy that we've had since the beginning of this program. So, my plea to you and my recommendation to you is that I would strongly recommend placing this on the ballot in November 2018 with no increase.
Any questions?
Chief, you made a comment. The way I took it was that there's been a twenty percent increase in the calls.
Yes, that was the snapshot in 2016, that the call volume that we received was fifteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-six, and that was a twenty percent increase from 2015. Now, a lot of that can be attributed to two of the gentlemen that you saw here. We have a very, very motivated workforce who actively go out and seek out crime and keep the community safe, and a lot of our on-view stats, which are included in those calls, have risen significantly. So, we've got a very younger, motivated workforce that's out doing more than probably they have done in recent history. But there's also other things. We have drug issues statewide. We have mental health crisis here in the county that impacts us, and that's not always our residents, a lot of people passing through. So, yes, calls for service are going up, but I would also attribute that to the workforce.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Council Milch?
Chief O'Connor mentioned that with the fire levy, a portion of it is going to capital reserves for expenses for replacing equipment. I don't see that as a part of the budget. I wouldn't expect that the two would be identical, but would you say your budget, what you use the levy money for was based on what the departmental needs were at the time and as they have changed over the years? You rely on the city budget, then, for your capital reserves for replacing equipment? Is that, would that be correct?
Generally speaking, that would be accurate, yes. There are small amounts that we use for equipment purchases within this for these particular people, but yes, your statement would be correct.
Any other questions? Is there anyone that wants to speak on this issue? All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 1139, which recommends placing a police services levy renewal on the November 2018 ballot.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilor McMahon, seconded by Councilor Tracy. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution 1138, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 1138 is passed.
Thank you.
Three-eight or three-nine?
Councilor, I have to be quiet about it now.
Yeah, you can't, no talk.
I think it's three-nine.
Three-nine.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong one. Resolution 1139. Do we need to vote again?
No.
I think it was, the motion was three-nine.
Okay.
That was correct.
I was incorrect. It's Resolution 1139. All right. Next item is number fourteen, business license fees. Staff?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Council. This item, we've finally been able to gather enough information to bring back to you and get some more direction. As you recall, we had a very healthy work session back in February, and you gave us some general guidance on what you'd like staff would do. And so, what we've put for you in the packet this evening is a copy of the research that we've done from all the other cities, which takes time to gather and to correlate, and we also, I believe, received, did we receive from the city of Canby?
We did, and I'll get that.
Okay. So, we have that information as well. Really, what the discussion point is in our mind this evening is to talk about what you want to do with the rental property, because everybody agreed that we should change the current five dollar per FTE charge to five dollar per employee over three FTEs, and we can make that change. And then also, the majority of you wanted to change the initial fifty dollar home occupation fee to cover staff expenses and eliminate the fifty dollar annual home occupation renewal fee. So, we understand that. Really, what it's down to is talking about the tiered approach that you would like us to do for the rental properties. We've put a proposed table in for you tonight to look at where it's, for one rental unit, we would charge twenty-five dollars. Between two and five, it would go to fifty. Between six and twelve, it would go to seventy-five, and thirteen up would go to a hundred dollars. And you can see that all of the cities are all over the board on how they do it, and there's really no consistent message except that they do have it for rental properties. There is a fee enclosed. We're looking for guidance tonight, and we would bring back the master fee schedule at the end of June for you to adopt. Our recommendation would be all the changes would go into effect in January of 2019 with no retroactive monies being paid out. The second piece of this conversation is once we would neutralize the fees and have a better understanding of how much revenue the city would actually be collecting on an annual basis, that this summer, I would be coming to you with a community grant program proposal to talk about how do we allocate the revenue that we are collecting from the business fee schedule. So, I really think the missing piece is trying to understand what financial changes the city wants to make to the program, because we cannot implement any new grant programs and be handing out funds until we know what a secure revenue stream is going to be for the business licenses. So, we have tried to summarize your options in your packet this evening. We also made sure we contacted all of the individuals that had an interest in this topic from the February work session, and if you would like to give us more guidance on the rental property fee schedule, then we're happy to bring back a master fee schedule for you to amend.
There's a lot there. I'm sure we have some questions.
My only comment was, when we first did this, I thought that we had done a little bit more legwork than apparently we had as far as rental units, in that my understanding was a lot more of the cities were charging per unit than what apparently they do. So, this is good information to have in front of us.
And we do have additional correspondence that came in related to this agenda item.
Yep.
Correct. Any discussion?
I do want to share, when I spoke to Council Reisner today, he still believes that anything that is decided, he would like to retroactively pay back people application fees. He understands that decision's not being made this evening, and he holds the, reserves the right to state that if there is an amended resolution further down the road. Another idea could be simply, as you can see, there's a lot of information, and if we're proposing that something be in place for the next calendar year, it could be that one or two of you want to sit down with staff to have more time to kind of dissect some options. It's really up to what the council wants to do at this point.
And I would like to do that, sit down and dissect this a little more. I have a concern because of some of the rental units and just in speaking to some people in the last month, and the movement that's been around that people are moving from one unit to another or from one location to another is because of the cost and the owners upping the rent, and people just can't afford it, and I'm really concerned about losing more people in this community. I get, you know, for the city, and I understand that, you know, it's revenue for us, but I think we, you know, we are not a Lake Oswego or Westland where people can afford that, and I think that's something that we need to really think about and consider.
All right. Council Milch?
As I recall, at the work session in February, we had a property owner who owned several rental properties, who suggested that we go to a tiered approach, and I see that's what you're recommending here, something very similar to what he mentioned. And just for clarification now, currently, our approach had been fifty dollars per unit? Is that regardless of the number of units?
No, twenty-five.
Twenty-five? Okay, okay. And so, for twelve units, someone who owned twelve units would be paying then three hundred dollars a year in fees under the current schedule, and we're recommending to change that to seventy-five dollars. So, that's a substantial increase. I think it begins to address-
Decrease.
Decrease, yes, yes. Thank you for listening to the words that are just pouring out of my mouth uncontroll. So, I think this helps to address some of the concerns that Councilor Neese had regarding at least that the city is not contributing too great an amount to the cost of providing rental properties. And I think, I'm glad that we've responded responsibly to the issues raised by that property owner.
And quite honestly, the tiered approach that we're applying really is a revenue reduction, a big revenue reduction, and part of that is because we're not driven by that. We want fair and equitable tiered approach, and so, yes, what we're proposing is actually a very viable solution, but if they're not ready to make that decision, that's fine. Like I said, if a couple of you want to meet with staff for the next month or two to go through it in more detail, understanding that it's not the renters that are paying this cost, it is the owners, but generally, it gets passed on to a renter.
Yes, it will.
But, you know, it's whatever the council's desire is, we just take the majority, the direction from what you'd like to do.
So, Councilor Neese, this is a significant reduction over what it is currently. Would you still like to postpone a decision and meet with staff, or are you comfortable?
I would like to, I'm sorry, I would like to postpone it-
Okay.
...and meet with staff to have a little more discussion.
Consensus, Council Milch?
Well, I think since they weren't going to go into effect until January 2019 anyway, I don't think we'd lose anything by postponing the decision, but, you know, I'd be happy to complete them as they are, but I respect Councilor Neese's desire to have more discussion on this.
Council Tracy?
I'm still seeing it under one percent, and feel like we did listen, and we did make some changes and go out and do some due diligence. I'm comfortable with the new proposal, but if Councilor Neese needs to have some more time and discussion, I feel like I'll agree with Councilor Milch. We've got a little runway here.
Council McMahon?
I'd have to agree as well. And even, you know, at thirteen houses, a hundred dollars, that means, what's my math, six dollars, so fifty cents a month that goes to the renter, so it's a very small amount, but I'm okay waiting another month or two to hammer it out.
Council Mercerow?
I'll go along with that decision.
Okay. So, can we put it on the calendar? Is a month enough time, Councilor Neese? Can we put that in? What is the July?
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
The tenth, July tenth?
Okay.
What does our agenda look like for the tenth? Super full? Can we, we can move it to August?
Yeah. My recommendation would be-
August fourteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
May I say one more thing, Mayor? I think we're also in an environment right now where there's no hesitancy for a landowner or somebody who has rentals to kick up rents, you know, thirty, forty percent at a swipe and then come in and have conversations with us over a one percent tax increase. I think everybody needs to really understand that those are the numbers, too. So, as Councilor Neese, and thank you, Councilor Neese, for being concerned about the citizens, we see thirty percent rent increase, it's just based on market-
No, I agree with you. You're right.
...with absolutely no concern for the tenant. So, then while that's happening, folks are coming in here and begging on the tenant's behalf, and I just think it's a little disingenuous. Thank you.
All right. So, we'll move this to the August fourteenth. Um- So we'll move this to the August 14th. Next item is business carried forward. Library update by City Administrator Betts.
Thank you very much. I have a city hall, a police department, and a library. And I can tell you that we've got two processes going with the library. One is, okay, what's next with the building and the project? And what are we doing about the library director position? So first of all, in your packet, that is a public document, is a chart that Clackamas County produced. And they want everyone to understand this is a draft process in regards to the Oak Grove potential Concord property site and the Gladstone Library process. The next step for the Gladstone Library process is this fall, they will be putting together a task force, recruit members from the community based on specific areas of need or expertise, and putting that together to work with a county-employed project manager that they are currently recruiting for. So the county will be paying for a project manager to manage the Oak Grove and the Gladstone Library project. As far as I know, as of last week, they will be coming back to me probably this fall to get input on the task force members for the Gladstone area. They're also putting together a task force for the Oak Grove area, and they're going to be wanting one Gladstone representative for that. And I know June 19th, the Board of County Commissioners will get an update on their library project. And that information will be sent to me that I can share with you in regards to the Oak Grove process. What kind of participation are they going to have for Gladstone in that process? So all very healthy conversation moving forward. They are going to have their public relations team work with the county administrator and myself to put together public information in regards to what the next steps are. And I look for that to happen in the next couple of weeks. So it'll be another communications plan about the next steps for the Gladstone Library. So again, I appreciate their support, their use, their resources that they've made available to us moving this forward. And I'm also excited that yesterday, I met with Don Crepp, the county administrator, and we both have a desire to pursue them providing temporary library director services from the county. Currently, Mitzi Olson is the library director for Oak Grove. Everybody understands that the intent always was, as we move forward, that our city employees would become county employees. There would be one library director that would oversee both Oak Grove and the Gladstone Library. With the departure of Lauren Gunderson, this creates an opportunity for us to really look at operations and efficiencies of services. So all I'm talking about right now is working on intergovernmental agreement to have Mitzi provide part-time library director services for the Gladstone area. And if I get head nods from all of you, then I'm going to work on an intergovernmental agreement to bring back to you for approval that allows us to have that. So I think all very positive movements that we're moving forward on both fronts.
I've been getting asked constantly how to get their name on the list of advisors for this task force. Should they contact you? Should they contact the county?
I think that's part of the communications plan the county and I want to put together. I'm always happy for you just to refer people to me and let me flush that out. And I'm glad that there's a lot of excitement and activity, because not only with the library is that next month, we're going to have our first work session regarding the Civic Center, and we're going to need engagement from the community on all three projects. But yes, they can work with me on that.
Okay.
And I also just want to be clear that at the small task force meeting that we had last week, there is no indication from me, I don't know if you've heard otherwise from the community, that we are going to pursue anything other than a 6,000 square foot library. And anything addition to that would require us to go out either for a proposed taxing district, or to try to finance money. Every now and then, I hear rumors of people saying, I understand we're going to get more than the 6,000 square foot. And I just want to publicly say that my direction from the city council has been to pursue what is in the settlement agreement, pursuing to having the county build us a 6,000 square foot building. There's potential in the future that we can design that building for more expansion, but that would be further down the road if we do that. And so unless I'm hearing otherwise from you, the county administrator and I are pursuing option A that we agreed to in the settlement agreement.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item is business from the council. Councilor Milch?
Thank you. A couple of months ago, at the planning commission meeting, we had, well, let me back up a little bit. Back in August, one of the things that this council had to consider, one of the first things that, the first meetings that I had to make a vote on was when a local developer was looking to put in an apartment project near the Olson Wetlands property. And around the time before that project came to the planning commission and to the city council, a group of citizens, led in part by Brian Early, who serves as a chaplain to some of our local departments, public safety departments here, and is a pastor of the Baptist church over on Caldwell Street. He and a group of citizens got really involved in that, worked closely, very cooperatively with the developer in engaging people in the community and helping to educate the council and the planning commission on concerns that they had. And at the time, I remember being impressed by the way the people got engaged. It wasn't shouting and accusations for the most part. It was a positive kind of community engagement. And a couple of months ago, a couple of the people that were involved in that process came to the planning commission and promoted, proposed that we look at ways of doing what at the county level is called community planning organizations. Local groups, CPOs, local groups which in the unincorporated county areas are groups of citizens who, because they live in kind of the same approximate area, form a little group with bylaws and membership and some rules for how they regulate themselves, to be sure that they are kept informed of some of the issues involving planning and where they live. At the city level, within the county, the groups are called neighborhood associations. And that's not the same as a homeowner's, neighborhood homeowner's association, which some of you have maybe lived under, in property developments in the past. But again, it's a group of people who live approximately the same area, and who want to be kept informed of potential items that would be coming related to planning in their area. These two citizens, Randy Thomas and Brian Early, asked the planning commission if we could appoint a couple of people to sort of form a task force to look at the possibility of starting this neighborhood association process within the city of Gladstone, if there were people who were interested in it. And we've had some interest from members of the planning commission, and they came back to us, and I was asked to bring it to the council to see if there were people at the council level. When we had our planning meeting with LB Day back in September, one of the things that we came out of was a goal to engage citizens more in a positive way. And I think this is a way to do it. We get good guidance at the county level for how this is done. We have good support now from our county planning official who works with the city. We don't want to spend or commit a great deal of city budget time to this. But at this level, I think just getting some citizens involved and looking to see how it could take shape would be a helpful thing. So I'm interested in knowing if there are other members of the council who might be interested in being part of a task force to look at that.
Yeah, I've been talking with Randy and Brian, so absolutely, sign me up.
Good.
I think it's a great idea.
I'd be happy to join in.
Great, great. All right. I think, I don't know that we're limited to, I guess, suppose we're limited to three from the council.
The three.
Perhaps we could rotate sometimes, so that we get a little bit of a fresh space in there, so I'm not taking the place of some-
Well, I'd like to be able to go back to them and tell you that we've brought it, and that we feel positive about it, and that there's that interest.
Yes.
I think it could be a helpful thing. And, you know, we don't have a lot of projects coming before the planning commission anymore, particularly residential projects, just because of the nature of the city and the way it is. But, you know, some of these organizations do more than just responding to planning. They look at other concerns in their neighborhoods, and it would be a way to, for people to form groups and link to the city as a group and as a neighborhood.
Absolutely.
So it'd be, I'm glad that we can do that.
Wonderful. Yes, absolutely.
Just to share with you, West Lynn has six neighborhood associations, and it's very effective.
And I think there are over 100 in Portland, and they've been around since the early '70s.
That's why we have an office bureau.
Yeah, they have a whole big budget and everything for it over there. We're not quite there yet, but I think I'm glad to see us kind of moving in that direction.
Absolutely. Wonderful. All right, Council Neese?
I had, I was at Kiwanis, and I learned a little bit on some things about Gladstone a little more. I don't know, maybe you know who Jerry Appleby is? He's the principal and director. So he gave a real rundown at our meeting, and there's anywhere from nine to 11 different agencies in that building over there. And I did not realize there was that many. And he's offered, if anyone's interested, for us to come and take a tour, and he'll walk us through it. In January of 2019, they are going to be celebrating 10 years for that facility. And one of the, they are a model for this, around the state, which is really great. And Pendleton came over because they're like five years ahead of their time, and with what they're doing over there. So Pendleton came down, evaluated what was going on and what they're doing, and so they are going to open up a facilities there in Pendleton, like what we're doing here. So I thought that was really neat. And they serviced with children last year, 780. They doubled it this year, servicing 1,500. And they have lunch programs, free lunch for children every day, Monday through Friday.
Awesome.
So they're quite busy there. And they're, they will be bringing on a VHS personnel person. She'll be in there one day a week. They've not had that before either. So they're real excited about what's happening.
And they need people to read to the little ones.
Yes.
And it is so much fun. I highly recommend it for everybody. Council Tracy?
Couple items. A few months ago, I was approached by a citizen regarding the illumination on Portland Avenue, and had a conversation with City Administrator Betts and Public Works Director Jim Whynot. And we were, we were just talking a little bit about the lighting. And as it turned out, Mr., Public Works Director Whynot contacted PGE, and they, there was a whole bunch of LED lights that miraculously appeared on Portland Avenue.
Wow.
First things first, I'd like to know if anybody actually saw PGE put these lights up along the avenue, because I don't know anybody that actually saw them do it. And Director Whynot, did you have any sightings of these trucks or any?
[laughing]
So I will say this, I came down here a few nights ago, and it is, it is just amazingly different to see it lit from, I think, Cross Park all the way down to, is it going all the way down to the high school? It's fantastic. And I think Director Whynot and also PGE for doing this is a very cost-effective way of taking care of our lighting issue. The other thing I wanted to add was, we are at the point now where we're going back into one more discussion with the North Clackamas County Water Commission, and we're going to hopefully finalize this IGA. It's gone through legal review with all attorneys. And I'm happy to say that it's a very cooperative effort between us and Oak Lodge Sunrise Water, and things have gone really well. And I think we're going to come out of this in pretty good shape. So I'm very happy that everybody on staff has worked on this, and that the attorneys have as well. So, and I thank everybody for the good spirit there. So thank you.
Thank you for taking that on.
It's been fun.
[laughing]
Just I keep missing the city's dinner, so we're going to change some schedule here.
It's almost done. It's almost done. Council McMahon?
Breakfast tomorrow?
Yes.
At 7:30 to help start? What time do you need?
Seven for you?
Okay.
Yes?
For the employees for the city. Tomorrow, if all goes well, there will be a pizza joint opening, is what it said.
It's open.
So I've got my fingers crossed that I'll be at work, but I may bring the fire engine. Don't tell my boss.
So they are open?
I don't, it said tomorrow.
Yes. Okay, tomorrow.
The 13th.
They have new outdoor seating.
Yeah, it's looking good.
Disassembled. Bike night is Thursday night.
Yes, and latest motors bike night is this Thursday night, so I'm sure they want to be open or not, so. And then just one other note, on PGE, they have always been very good for us. There is one of the Eagle Line crews that lives here in town, and for life, man, I can't remember his name. But every year when we hung the Christmas ornaments up on the tree, that guy would help us come out with his bucket truck. Half the time, the lines hadn't been, the outlets hadn't been changed in 20 years, so the one year we did it, he probably changed five or six outlets for it. I says, well, you know, it was just coming off the direct feed off the, we weren't getting charged for it, because it was just coming off the direct feed off the lights and stuff. So they've always been very good for us, so good workers.
Wonderful. Council Mercer?
I was a little bit disappointed to hear the city is, the city schools are going to stop basically the food pantry. And I'm glad that the city didn't take on the expense. But it is a item that I believe needs to be addressed somehow. And I have no problem getting involved in that, in that public citizens and/or businesses and/or whoever, maybe car clubs, can get involved in that, because I think it is a needed item. It may be abused a little bit by some, but I think with a little bit of work, the needed people could use some help.
So you're volunteering?
I'd be willing to help out for certain.
There you go.
All right. Keep us posted. All right, I only have a couple of things. First is the Fourth Annual Police and Fire Community BBQ at Max Patterson Park, obviously on the Fourth of July. It starts at, what, 11? 11 to like 2-ish?
12.
2 o'clock. It's free. They do this out of the kindness of their heart. Last year was great. We had games and crafts. Don't know if we're going to be able to do it to that extent this year. I'm not going to be able to attend, but I'm still cooking. I'm making about 500 cookies. So if anybody else wants to help make cookies, let us know.
Yeah, you're going to need lots of cookies, because we ran out last year.
Yeah, that's why I'm making 500, hoping somebody else helps. Next is, I'm, Council Milch and I are sitting on the Parks and Rec Board meetings, and they've decided that their focus is going to be on shelter rentals, and also looking at the boat, parking, and access to the river, see if there's some way that we can, I don't know, do passes or day use fees, something. So they're going to start looking into that. And then they're actively still pursuing a fitness court, getting a grant to pull that together, which would be great. And then I wanted to thank the Eagle Scouts that put in the new Gladstone Nature Park sign and the trail on Webster Road right by Kearns. It looks wonderful. Thank you to the Eagle Scouts for really adopting the nature park, and for Fognap, for helping manage that and pull it all together. So that's all that I have.
[inaudible]
Oh, groundbreaking. Yeah, that's coming up, isn't it? Council Milch?
Council Reisner was not able to be here tonight, but he expressed a concern that probably some of the community have also. I understand there was a traffic accident again recently over at the corner of Arlington and McLaughlin. And we did a traffic safety, or a transportation safety plan this past year, and we've done one, you know, in past decades as well, that always identified that intersection as very problematic. And I know citizens are concerned that, it doesn't seem as though ODOT is doing anything about it. But having this call to our attention again because of this accident, I think City Administrator Betts got in touch with ODOT, and we're trying to keep the lines of communication open, and for them to be aware that this is something that continues to concern our community, and that we hope that we can find a way to make some changes there. So I think if Council Reisner had been here tonight, he would have probably brought that up as part of his business, and I want to make sure that it got mentioned.
Okay.
City Administrator Betts, you did get favorable- City Administrator Betts, you did get favorable response, did you not?
Absolutely, yes.
From ODOT?
We have traction, and it's the STIP process right now, which is their statewide transportation improvement plan. So I'm working with their staff to get our priorities onto that plan, yes. So we have momentum going forward.
Thank you.
Great. And then the groundbreaking?
Yes, and we decided not to call it groundbreaking, but project kickoff, because when we construct, we'll do groundbreaking, but it will be June twenty-sixth, five forty-five PM onsite. We will do a public launch of that media, letting people know it's an open-to-the-public event. This Thursday, we will start that, yes.
Do, should we have a cake?
You will have shovels and hard hats. We could do a cake, but honestly, we were just going to come back here and do a business meeting, but, yes.
All right. I won't buy a cake then. I like every reason I have to buy a cake.
Five hundred cookies?
(laughing). Okay. So that's all I have. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilor Neese and seconded by Councilor McMahon. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned at eight PM.